Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our special meeting tonight with a joint session with the Arts Commission. And in compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person telephonic and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're going to call this study session to order, and we'll do a little round the room and have everybody introduce themselves. Start with Ethan.
I'm Ethan Newton, Parks and Recreation Director.
Sean Smith, I'm on the City Council.
I am your mayor, Jeff Wagner.
Patty Melton, Arts Commission.
Stan Sullivan, City Council.
Debbie Cartoff, City Council.
Ben Porter, City Council.
Joe Simone, City Council.
Reginald Moley, City Manager.
It's pretty.
Yeah. I just said that just to pick me up. So we have several items here for discussion tonight, but I'm going to turn this over to Patty, Chair of the Arts Commission, who has joined us up here at the head of the table, so I'm going to turn this to you.
Okay. So. Well, get started, but before we get started, I want to introduce you to our leading commissioners. Our commission right now is down to four people. And tonight, one of our commissioners, Riley, had a work emergency and couldn't make it. And we have another commissioner that's a little bit missing in action right now, so Jessica Breen and I will be here to present all this for you. And. And get started. So as we've done in years past, we're going to, we're each going to take a piece of the presentation and kind of talk through it. We're going to start off with Jessica, who's going to be discussing our 2022 reemergence from COVID with years, highlights, and future endeavors. And then we'll just move through the, through the presentation, the training places, and if you have any questions along the way, just stop us, okay? We can save them till the end, but pretty informal, so just throw them out there as you think of them. All right?
All right, well, we were excited to get back out in the real world again and participate with community, and that was something that was lapping the last few years that we've been doing this during. So that was, we came out with a gusto. And then we participated in April at the first Maker's Market. And then we were, we were there both days for Covington Days in July. In August, we were beginning Kids Fest. And then we put out our Phase Three for the vinyl wrap call for the utility boxes. So it was a very busy but fun year so far of events that we didn't get to do in the past few years, Covington Days and Kids Fest. And then with the addition of the Maker's Market, hopefully the Chamber of Commerce would be set up because of participation in Greaves and also very cool venue to meet other local artists around our community. So that was, that was something that we didn't have before here, and now it's here, and I hope to keep that so. The first event that we did in April was that Maker's Market with that Real Life Church. Not sure, I saw a few of you guys were able to come. And what we did was we put together a scavenger hunt using the different items that can be found at the booths within the Maker's Market to kind of get people out there and looking what the booths had. And if they could find it, then they could check it off. Kids and adults were able to participate. And at the end, they could return their scavenger hunt checklist, and then we would give them an art supply. And people couldn't believe that we were giving away free art supplies. I mean, I think that was the biggest question, are you sure it's free? I'm like, yes, it's free. To.
Sign up for this time.
Right. You'd have to join the commission. Safe to work with. So that was really fun to see kids and adults really excited to get art supplies. It seems so second nature to us. Being on the Art Commission, we're both crafty. I mean, well, as you say, all four of us are ingrained in art, but it was just fun to give away something that could create art within the community. So it was well received. We ran out of the checklists. I would say about three quarters of the way through, and then we were going to just give out the art supplies because we didn't want that fun stop. So next time if we were to do this again, I think we need to print more scavenger hunt pages because that's something that we lacked as we ran out of that.
How many did you?
About two hundred.
Two hundred?
Uh huh. Two hundred, we had two hundred and fifty art supplies. And I have a few containers of chalk and not very many things left that we did not we were able to donate most of the things. So it was really great participation. We also got a shout out on the Chamber of Commerce page because of this, so it encouraged people to come down and take a look. And if you were, if you were there, you could see many people with this scavenger hunt on their hand, running around trying to find it. And it just added, I think, something to it because it guided people to participate with these vendors, even if they didn't buy anything, just to see what they had. And so I think the vendors also appreciated this approach because it brought people to their.
How, um, did you communicate with vendors beforehand and know what was in different groups?
So I got a list from the Chamber of Commerce of all of the vendors, and I retitled it. So they didn't know, they didn't know that it was going to be, and I made them a little bit general, so it was like paper goods. You know, it wasn't using gold, and the this vendor does this. And I made it over, an overview, like candles or, you know, based off of each vendor's offerings is where I kind of pulled that from. And it worked out so well because everyone that I pulled stuff from, they showed up and they were there. They did this because I thought about that. I tried to make them more general so that you wouldn't run into that. But it worked out great, and the weather cooperated with perfect.
I wonder if that'll work at other.
Yes. Yeah. So I think this could be adapted to many different events that we go through. And as long as we have that vendor list beforehand, this would be really easy. And it would be a great success. And then the next one that we participated in was Covington Days. We had two booths. One was decorate a balloon. With what's your joy was our overview topic that we wanted people to think about. We got a lot of kids, but we did get some teenagers that came in and decorated balloons, some that came back again and again and again to make more, which was really fun because you could see they don't, no one had any inhibitions about what it should be or shouldn't be. And so we were really open, and I think that left a creativity flow. And so from that, we brought in a presentation in the back here of all those balloons that were decorated. Some kids opted to take theirs home with them, which was perfectly okay. We let, we let them take, or if they wanted to leave them with the idea that we would potentially display it somewhere in City Hall at some point for the community to come and actually look at the artwork that they created. And so Patty has put up these boards, and they are just beautiful. If you go take a look at them after the meeting, and you can see like some people are amazing, they're just amazing artists of all, all sizes over there. So there was little kids and adults on that board. And it was great just to have them come in, sit down, unload off for a little bit, and draw. And then right next door, we had the selfie booths that had a musical theme to it. A past commissioner, Dean Cook, was able to come and volunteer too. I got to spend the day with her, she was super fun. And the selfie booth was something that we didn't really have to man too much. People just could come in and out at their leisure, and I think that made it casual. But it was still really inviting for people to come in and take selfies using our musical background and those little blow up musical instruments we had. People had a lot of fun with that. I think lessons learned next time from music. My speaker died pretty early on in the event. I had the idea, but I just didn't charge it long enough. So that would be preferred if you do it next time is to get some music because I think that really was bringing people in. We were right next to the dump tank, that was interesting too. Little splash zone around there. And then we were able to go to the Kids Fest as well, which was really well received. Lot of, lot of kids showed up at this event. We made these dragonflies, right, that are on some of your name tags. And we were able to make a hundred and fifty, well, we had supplies to make a hundred and fifty at the table. And then we packaged up a hundred and twenty-five that people could take and make them at home. If they didn't want to stop and participate in this, they could take them home, and we gave all of those away. They were all taken, all taken, could have made more and given out more because some kids, when they were there, are just overwhelmed, right? There's a lot going on, they didn't want to sit down and look at it, but the parents were more than happy to take it home and have a craft that they could do at home. So it was just a nice way to get people sitting down at the table and then also remembering us when they went home. And on the take home kits, we put little, join the commission, those cards in the bag with them. So hopefully that's when, that's when some of this is going to come along. So that was our little side plan was to have them as a way to promote the Arts Commission and the City of Covington after the event is open.
I want to throw something into Jessica's lovely daughter. Has helped us with just about every event we've done, and she is just as amazing as her mom.
She would be here right now, and she said, because she's twelve, but she's, she's just as excited to do all of these things, I think she's in that picture right there. She's a great help. So the next project that we've got on deck is vinyl art wraps. So these are a couple of the ones that we already have in place. Obviously, the community has done nothing but gush about how much they love, love these, drawing by them makes them happy. Oh yeah, I live by this one, and I see this one all the time, and I love this one, and I like that one. And so I'm excited that we're going to have another round of this. So we just put out the call in September for the Phase Three of the utility box vinyl wraps with the, the theme of inclusion and acceptance and encouraging artists of diversity and that are under representative, underrepresented to submit. So we, we've gotten many submitted for this, and we're going to be reviewing them at our next mission meeting to decide where, what arts we're, we're going to look at placing in those four locations that we have available for arts. So we have those, the current projects that we have in the hopper are those four utility boxes. And then we're going to get ready very soon to put out another call for arts for the rotating part at the Covington Community Park. So we have the, the ads laid, the concrete paths laid for those rotate, that rotating artwork to come in. Now we just need to get the submissions. And once that call goes out, I'm sure it will go out within, by the end of the year, I would say. It's all ready to go, so we just need to get some final confirmation from the, the installation. I believe is what we're waiting for to send that out. So those are the projects that we have in the hopper. And then when we had a retreat since the beginning of September, and we're planning for future projects, which we developed. What we had in the retreat is that we had the stipulation that each of the committee members would come together and have a plan developed. Fully developed from start to finish on what costs would be, how the installation would go, what that process would look like. And so some of the things that we came up with were creating a labyrinth, just a meditative pathway in one of the parks that's being, either Jenkins Creek or Soco Park would be a great option to explore this installation being for them. That was one of the ideas. And then we have a postcard set of all of our current art for around the city. Something else we were thinking of having heated crosswalks, if that's an option for, for us somewhere. Or a painted crosswalk would be really fun, similar to some, some that you have seen in Capitol Hill maybe. And then the idea of exploring flow and circus arts at one of the parks, which is a very interesting dynamic idea, which brings in not just creativity and, and drawing or physical art, but motion as art. So that was like the fire we thought fit. That was the goal. I know. And then having Covington become a creative district in Washington State. That is something that we're working towards. So why is art important and what impact can it have on our city? We've been working with community partners to not only different mission groups, but also the Chamber of Commerce, Multi Care, there's a couple of others that we've been talking about. How can we create more arts with the people that we have in place and the places that we have in place? So we've really dived into that this year. There is value for the arts in childhood development. There's been a lot of research on, on if art is available in education, it helps with so many other things, not just art. So that has a big, especially with the learning, not learning gaps, but the gap that was created by the pandemic. I think this, the more we promote art, it can just help with everything else. Motion of cultural diversity via the arts, so we're really trying to hit on that with that Phase Three vinyl wraps. And then art as a prime reducer and determinant. If, if there's art, especially like on the, I think, there's only been one time that the utility box has been tagged with DVD. Would that be the case if they were bare and blank, they might get hit more. You know, there's one by my house that definitely is getting hit and doesn't have artwork on it. So it deters people from facing that same with the skate park, it's the same kind of thing, and people respect art. And they, you know, keeps them from causing havoc and harm of property. If we can put artwork in place, that usually keeps people from helping. And then growing our reputation and increasing tourism to our city is a big role for us as well. So the value of art and community, again, I'm going to touch on that, how, what it does for kids within education. So it helps with English, math, science, and social studies. It just creates more engagement with, with children when you have art paired with the education.
Well, I'm just going to leave this up, so I'm going to pick it up right here.
Okay.
Continue to talk about availability of art, art programs in Covington to children. Has long been a top priority for this commission, and we do discuss this every year with you guys. And we just want to make sure that we are promoting art every event we can. So far, I think we've been pretty successful. We are a pretty slim commission right now. There's a couple of things that we've had to pass on, but the most part where it all gave us big things. And it's super popular, the kids like to come do these kind of stuff, so it's pretty helpful. But really, the statistics don't lie. Art stimulates creativity and problem solving skills. It also strengthens logical thinking, it promotes self-esteem, self-expression. There's no right or wrong, no, no good or bad, nothing to worry about like that. Art contributes to fine motor skill development. Educators are actually reporting now that kids are coming to school without those fine motor skills, which kind of delays them a little bit. Art helps develop visual spatial processing, so it helps kids understand where objects are in space. For example, if you remember the kindergartner, you have one, you know, when they were drawing their family, their heads were, you know. But, you know, by doing the art, they, they learn where things are really supposed to be. They are good, but you know what I'm saying? Art also builds memory and self-control. It provides rest, relaxation, and reward. It increases stress levels and levels of anxiety, and this date is super important. It increases academic performance. A study of over ten thousand eighth graders improved their writing scores thirteen percent and did decrease disciplinary issues by three point six percent by being in an R class. It connects kids to people and the world. And so we already went over those statistics. And I realize telling you guys all these facts is like creatures of fire. We've talked about this every year, but I just want to remind you how important it is, and we really need to put our money where our mouth is. If we want, if we want to grow, we want to grow the kids' art programs where we can for the benefit of our community. And there's a really good quote that just always sticks with me, and it says, talent and intelligence are equally distributed throughout the world, but opportunity is not. And where that kind of strikes, strikes me is that when we create a program, let's say we have something here at City Hall. The parents that can drive their kids here, get their kids here. The kids who have parents that work, work two jobs, or three jobs these days. How's that kid going to get here? We need to take the art where the kids are. And so two neighborhoods that aren't as active. And so that's something that I always try to really keep in mind, we want to get art out to kids, we need to go where they are. We can also provide those programs here, but we need to make sure to hit those other things as well. One, two. This, now this is something we've talked about probably every year. We touched on it, but there's so many new commissioners now, like we just, or, yeah, we just wanted to go over it. Our county members, sorry, we just wanted to go over it again really quick. The State of Washington Arts Commission has a program called Creative Arts District. And it is growing your communities through art. And it's a, it's a program that you have to apply. And then once you're accepted, you are certified Creative Arts District. And so far, the city or the state has this made Edmonds, Jewela, Olympia, Lacey, or Langley, Twist, Port Townsend, Tenino, Isakua, Reiner Valley, Cambridge, and Soco. And just this week, I think, just recently, Hurryan has been accepted. Now, this is like a wide variety of small and large cities. So this is something that we, what we do, and it's quite a lengthy process to apply for this. But we've been reviewing it, and we've kind of been working towards it all these last years. And we just, again, pulled all the paperwork out and looked at. I think we're, I think we're really ready. Jessica thinks we're more ready than I think we are, but I trust her because she really dives into stuff really. So I'm going to give you a quick review of this, just so everybody is up to speed with what's going on. It's offered through the State of Washington. It focuses on art and economic benefits in the communities that apply. So next one, what is a Creative Arts District? So I'm just going to read these right there. Creative Arts District helps Washington communities thrive. This award winning program works to grow the creative sector and helps communities turn cultural activities into economic growth. So, you know, all the, all the more buzzy stuff we talked about with the kids and the community and all that, that's all really, really important stuff. But art really means money to me. So that's what this kind of is. A Creative Arts District is a fun place to live, work, and visit. It's geographically, it's geographically defined area of cultural and economic activity and is the heart of a community. It's a place for people to gather and enjoy the communities, arts, culture. The district is a place where innovation and creativity can thrive and a place that helps community move enthusiastically into the future. And this, all this information is actually right on the Arts Well website, which is kind of pretty good stuff. Okay. And so how will this help Covington? State certification endures, endorses creative activities in our community. It recognizes the potential for growth. And certification can help us to promote Covington's creative identity, grow jobs in the creative sector, increase tourism, and bring new visitors, attract artists, startups, and creative businesses, create opportunities for affordable housing. This may include live work and maker spaces for artists, boost livability, and redevelop historic assets in the community. So if we get the certification, they don't just say, here you go. They actually help us develop this stuff. They provide funding for us for this kind of stuff. So it, it actually, I mean, they're putting their money where their mouth is. So it's a, it's a benefit to help our budget to grow. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a long.
We are.
There's like fifty pages worth of. You know what, I don't really know that. I don't think answered that. We've put quite a bit of. But they are also, they are also willing to help us with that process. If we get stuck on something, they'll help us. There's. So, no, no kidding.
Marina, I remember this years ago, pre-pandemic, I didn't remember. And, and it's so, forgive me, it's been a while. But I know what it looked into, and I thought there were several requirements city had to be ongoing. Just like any other type of professional improvement has been going on now. What cities can be doing that, right?
You know what, I'm not sure.
It goes beyond just what our commission does, it's what the city is doing. It's the city of the building.
Associate costs with those things to apply.
Right. And a lot of the stuff we're doing already, though, and we're already building for, right? I mean, everyone's already moving that way, so we might as well capture all of that effort and work and then see if we can apply. I think we're getting really close to that.
What I was just thinking, so the council has their annual summit, the agenda. It might be an agenda, discuss this, we, Julie and I can go together.
Yeah.
Maybe pinpoint the spots that we need extra assistance in or.
They provided a checklist, which is just an easy thing to spot and look and yes and no, have we done this? And a lot of the things we have already been either starting to do or we've completed. So we have that checklist.
Okay, that sounds good.
So we can see what criteria we don't already.
Right, right. And a big thing with it is it says community buy. They want, you know, the, the government and the businesses, but as we've been, you know, reaching out and expanding the commission's footprint in the city, it, it's been a couple of years in the making, but we're getting them.
And also partnering with the Chamber of Commerce has been really helpful because they've got all of their businesses here. And they're moving that way anyways, especially with the Maker's Market stuff that they've been doing. They're going in that direction, and so I think that buy off would be.
Yeah.
As hard as.
Supporting and free.
Right.
Right. Anyway, so then how do they support us after the fact? They provide guidance to communities during and after certification. They're able to provide specialized resources, grant opportunities, technical assistance, training, and networking, track progress of our community's creative economy. In fact, I did contact that, Annette Rock, who's the head of, of the Arts Washington. And she was able to give me some facts that I didn't bring tonight, but how many creative jobs are already in here? What creative jobs? A software developer is the high, is the largest, in the actual city of Covington, is the largest creative job. And the jobs, and all the way down to an art teacher. A software developer makes as much as almost three hundred thousand dollars, and our teacher's fifteen thousand. That's backwards, but. Anyway, but they're there to help with that stuff, and they provide a grant, the grants are actually the common one. So, and they will help us with that. So where are we? That would be laying the groundwork of the last several years by developing the relationships needed in the community to make Covington's Creative Arts District be sound and successful. We've been actively working with or in communication with the Economic Development Council, Parks Innovation, Equity and Social Justice Committee, local art enthusiasts, and the Covington Chamber of Commerce. So anticipate. Kind of exciting. Okay. Down, down to business. All right, so I know you guys, we talked, we talked about this even here, but I don't want you to forget. So we're going to run with this into a new topic. From past presentations, but you'll be reminded of how important it is. From past presentations, but uh, you'll be reminded of how important it is. Possibility and the benefits of creative. I also feel like art is kind of like a big charity right now in the world. Um, it soothes the soul, like that song. And so I'm just happy to see the kids doing band concerts again and dance recitals. It's just like they should. So. Oh, we definitely have notes on this. I know this stuff. Okay, so, uh, art means money and surprising, not surprisingly. The arts community is the heart, one of the hardest hit because of COVID nineteen. So the numbers that we have for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So we're gonna be looking mostly at numbers. I do have a few, there are a few numbers filled in where um, we have more current information. So um, the first that we're gonna start with is a nationwide look. And in our, in the United States, the arts culture is four point three percent of the GDP. Which is almost a trillion dollars. And. This amount is greater uh. But it's greater than construction. So, arts and culture industries have five point two million workers on the payroll with a compensation of. Four hundred forty-seven billion dollars. This does not emphasize employee. Over a three-year period, so this is older figures, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. The value added to the GDP from arts and cultural production has grown at a three percent clip. And actually, um, when I was doing more research, it's been kind of three percent over quite a long. So now we're looking at Washington State and. I I'm proud of this. I mean, I have nothing to do with it, but when you look at this, Washington State. Has the second highest GDP, only second to Washington DC that has a museum. It's eight point seven percent. And if you look at the other states around there, I mean, it's like two or three percent is kind of the average, but in Washington State. Eight point seven percent of our GDP goes to the creative economy. Now we're gonna narrow it down a little bit more, a little bit more information here. And this actually is twenty twenty numbers. I was surprised because the last time I looked at this website, it was twenty nineteen, so, so they updated it. And these are, this is just information from Washington State. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand, hundred and twenty-one jobs, forty-three point two billion dollar industry. That's a lot of money. Makes up eight point seven of Washington's GDP. So what does that mean for Covington? And so if we look at the average amount of money that someone spends. Per person that comes to our city or in any event, let's, I'm just gonna pick cider and see. So the average person, let's say a couple comes to them and the average person spends. So that's like sixty bucks extra to bring towards our town in a sort of spending. So the more expensive we have, the better off we are. Move more money, the tax revenue. Get the businesses, the businesses benefit from that as well. Art supporting art, you guys have heard this from us for a while. The way you predict the future is to build it, and this is how we want that. We predict that might happen. So we're, this is the foundation that we're planning on laying, and that we've already actually started laying. We are working on developing a five-year plan for long-term goals. We are working on. Site, getting ready to apply for the Creative Arts District. That kind of puts us on the map and gives us additional funding. And continue promoting and encourage art-supporting art in Covington by organically turning the arts. Funding, excuse me, funding the arts through the admissions tax and realizing this return on investment. Take advantage of the grants and other arts organizations. One thing I wanted to bring up on this is I know you guys. Increased the um, admissions tax at, with the possibility of supporting the arts commission or the arts district more. And um, Ethan did a great job with that presentation on that. And one thing I wanted to point out was. That it seemed like there was some concern over the amount of money that we would receive with that, that the, the amount that city, that Seattle and Isopel got was about. Two hundred thousand dollars, but both of those, I mean, how many theaters are in Seattle? We're gonna have to. So the amount of money is not going to be anything near that, but as we grow the things in the community, then that can, that can go up. But I just wanted to put that. And then engage with local businesses and the community to explain our planning process and how it will benefit them. And I, I don't, we have not experienced any pushback on any of that yet. They just seem really excited that we are just sort of doing things. Um, so currently, we're doing the final wraps. We're working on rotating our CCP. We are also reevaluating our current programs just to make sure they're still relevant to the community. Uh, we want to collaborate with our partners, work with, uh, work with other cities of Covington commissioners or commissions and departments. And outside partners to bring arts to the community in a meaningful way. And of course, this maybe shouldn't be number one, recruit additional commissioners, because we are short three. So um, we do need to, to work on that. So if you know anybody, please encourage them to. And then in the future, cur, uh, do, develop more business partnerships. Encourage and collaborate and support local businesses and retail property owners to promote art in their spaces. This might include mini parks, murals, musical events, utilize empty retail spaces for art. The options really are limitless. Expanding Covington's art events, building on the success of Covington's Cider Festival. Hold more regional festivals and events if possible. This might include our own barbecue competition. Now, this is a, this is a pet of my husband. He's trying to do it in our little cul-de-sac, get all the neighbors involved. But I'm telling you, when they all start talking about it, there will be interest in some, it's something like that, you know? And then if you do it year after year, you know, you start the first year and it's like ten people, and then there's fifty, and then there's a lot. So just other kind of regional, regional things like that, or cultural events and fairs. And you can do um, like specific fairs, like the Renaissance Fair or things like that. Just draws a different vibe. Expanding art offerings. In addition to our current public art, we can begin to offer dance, music performing arts. Arts for the elderly residents and bringing art to the people where the people are. And we have talked over the last couple of years about expanding our, our offerings, because we do a lot of paper and pencil and paint stuff. So we want to do more performing arts and that kind of stuff. It's just taking a little while to get off the, the ground. Uh, attract creative businesses to Covington. Look for creative businesses that would be beneficial to Covington. For example, a bakery. Upscale restaurant, arts supply shop, regardless, I mean, I was just thinking of things that are artsy.
I would love to see all of those things here.
Um, and then bring the local, regional attractions to us. I mean, Seattle is the hub of our community, or our region, right? But Seattle Children's Theater, maybe we could contact them to come out here for weekends in, in an empty space somewhere where. Our local kids can go. Not everybody can get to Seattle. It's expensive in parks. It's, we get there, find a parking spot. I mean, all that stuff is. Is prohibited for people. So if we could bring that, um, Science Center, the Burke Museum, see if we can get them to come to us. And that's not just a pie in the sky thing for me to say, because the Chocoma Children's Theater does that. So we just need to see, you know, how much funding we have, how much does it cost, maybe we can grant for it somewhere. This, there's just all these things that we can do to bring it here. Alright, so return on investment for Covington. Return on investment is not just used here to coin a phrase. It can be our reality funds generated from the work done to promote creative economy in Covington can go a long way. Funding other important needs in our community, which in carefully and purposefully, at the heart of this, purposefully. These successes can improve the overall lives of our residents, both financially and culturally, creating a better quality. And this, I just found this quote, I thought it was good. Right, and?
What I'm brainstorming, I'm wondering if there's any new way to collaborate. I know we weren't. And but that was like, you, you brainstormed them, what both, it wasn't just like a walk in. It, it did include options for others, they didn't want that to be, because I wonder. Correct. So I wonder if there's any way we could collaborate in receiving a grant that would. You know, took a slice off the, out of that pie and. Not that anything helps, I mean, we're, we're desperate.
Well, I know that when the, um, one city, I was looking, I was looking at the Creative Arts District website, just going over it, trying, just like, I want that. Um, and then one city uh, was, wasn't very, but another city then just become a, a. Creative Arts District actually got a twenty thousand dollar grant for a project they had won. So, yeah, it's a little. I think it, I don't.
I don't know, we need like seventy-five.
Yeah, I was just thinking along similar lines, if we do have some resources here, we could do uh, summer plays for CCP. The band show there, but. We'd be happy to do that. I'd love to see Shakespeare in the Park or something like that. I know Bayberry Valley does something similar. Uh, I like the dragonfly. Two mascots, I don't know. Technically, it is the reason, so. So I'm wondering if there isn't something there we can brand about dragonflies, they insect do here, but. Uh, I'm thinking, we need, we need to do some outreach to the, the monk streets and see if there isn't some Native American art or something. Have them come sometime and talk about the art that they've created and what it means for this region, because I know. Covington is part of their ancestral lands and you have stuff in Jenkins Creek that I know is important to them. So something, if, if there's somewhere we can connect that to. To start creating that identity. Um, and then we just had a public safety meeting last night and. It came up about art and how it helps deter crime. And so I would encourage the. Art commission to start thinking about how we can use it to meet a whole host and it's not just, you know, return on investment. Make it better, but are there ways that we can, you know, make our community look better, but also. Um, incorporate it into some of our developments to help deter crime. Because that's, you know, getting the pub, we all agree, and but often, you know, you haven't had any pushback, we've had some on. Doing spending money on art, you know, it's totally worthless. And so it, I get it intrinsically, sometimes just make art part. But if we can layer those different arguments on top saying, well, these statues out here, you know, they're, they're, they're pretty. Or the arts sake, but they have a function too of deterring crime, because there's a physical form that people, oh, there's somebody, oh, it's, it's a statue. You know, so we need to be thinking in those multiple, what do they call, intersections of ways that we can get people to support. It's not just the pretty, pretty, pretty thing. Uh, and then we have a couple of other things coming up. I submitted some uh, decision cards, one of the potential cherry blossom festival. In spring, and I think that'd be an opportunity to add some art into that too. And then it sounds like on the um, wraps, um, working with the other commissions, but it sounds like you might have, already have that. Equity, Culture and Social Justice, it'd be kind of cool to see what they think of your um, uh, submissions.
They helped us write the call to you.
That's it. Valley Medical, we felt that, I meant for CBO about the.
Oh, really?
Big white shift. They're in agreement to. It's just a matter of what. That's.
Alright.
Yeah, so I was wondering if there's been any opportunity to, on, get sponsorship this time. Private sponsorship for either statue or the wraps. You know, like this is done, like two grand, like the business can have their hand in it, and maybe you could get more done.
I think we might have to do that through the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know.
That's, yeah, it's, when Maria was on the, I miss her a lot. She was here, she had a lot more free time to do stuff like that and go out during the day, but I worked till five, and so it's just like, am I gonna get that? And we all, we all work, so it's just, you know.
But I love that idea. Of having them provide an investment into it, and so they feel that buy-in, they're literally, they are bought into this. Whatever this is.
I wonder if that would help us, not just do the state boxes, but the PSC boxes, because those are a lot more stuff.
Yes, they are.
If you guys were to talk to Dana Leaks from the Chamber of Commerce and throw this idea out to her, she'd probably give you. Uh, one of the monthly luncheons, we give there, if I'm, or we have a speaker come in, but it could be great to have you guys come in and present some of this. And then talk about the wraps. That's where a lot of business sponsorships come a lot of. I'll check back with you on that then. How do you spell it?
I, I can send it to you, but.
Alright. More ideas, you guys are doing great.
I know, I love it.
I know when, um, I know that there's different groups as far as like going stepping out of pencil and paper. Um, when it comes to dances by heritage, right? Going by culture, there are many different parts. I honestly, I learned about it during the war. Like there were so many, one, one of them came out to Benowa Hall for the, for the concert. It was absolutely. And there's, there's, there's a lot in the community, not, not just us, it could be a little beyond. And if it was. Dance or whatever, but, but it could, I could see a, a event that.
Well, yeah, yeah. Do you know how to contact us before?
I could definitely look into it.
Okay, alright.
The one thing that we've run into with hosting an event like that is where. So that's what we've been kind of working on the backside of things, like where is there a stage, where is there enough parking? Where, you know, all the things that come into an event, right? That's the thing that we run into.
If we could do it like at Kentwood. But then we have then the associated costs with that, and we're, we're, we're on a, on a slim budget, but. I think that I've, I've just been toying with the idea. I'm, I'm no grant writer, I've never done it. But I need to take a class and learn how to do it. So um, I might just jump in and try, and learn about it. But that's maybe a bit of funding or something. Well, that's good, that's good.
And just dovetailing on Christine's um, comment, I mentioned this to Rita when she was, you know, I think she reached out, but. My sister-in-law runs the dance program.
She did talk to her.
And I'd be happy if she had contacted her again and, and we'd actually, we'll see if there's an opportunity to, you know, they travel all over. And the venues they use are very true, you know, huge to very small. So I think they make it fit. If we had something and wanted to bring some type of um, dance performance to come, then we might be able to do that. It probably takes some time, but I'd be here. So, and I don't know if they.
I, I was thinking about this, uh, opportunities for events in our downtown core. Because it helps with intervention and. Community and like for all the reasons. So it would be less fallible than, oh, we could have a dance in the street night. You know, if somebody was willing to, you know, get a parking lot or something like that. I just think it would be a fun thing, but even if we. We're over this stage together, somewhere that would, people would drive by going, oh yeah, we have a really cool event. It was fun, I think I'd be starting this time, but gosh, I'm a friend of the community. You know, and that's the kind of thing where people help give us some place in our downtown area. And more visibility, lots of reading, especially. And what is really, lots of really, especially.
Yeah, yeah.
I participate sometimes, several times generally, and I, I do know people who do stages on.
Oh, really?
He's a decent size.
That would be like a summary thing then. Right, still, I mean, summer is a perfect time for it.
But I love the dancing. Yeah, there's a slogan around that.
You can hang those lights.
It also keeps people in Covington and not having to go to tents or Auburn or physicals. Right, there's all of these events that are happening that bring people out of the community.
I do know that, I know that, that band teacher at Kent Lake. And, uh, he's always looking for places for his super jazz band to go. I mean, it could be, uh, some things, that's a student-led kind of a thing.
Right.
And then we could really dance. Anyway, so funding is, is an issue and, and I understand, bros are important, ladies are important, everything's important. This is also important, but we, we are limited in what we can do. So hopefully if we can get this Creative Arts District thing going, and we get some more support from the state, we can actually. Put up with me, trying to read those slides from way back.